I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, do we get approval minutes from December 17?
Motion to approve and suspend.
Alright, we have a motion to approve and suspend from Nancy. Second, Jason. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the agenda, any changes or additions or...
Yeah, it's six A.
Six A, been added to what you guys initially had. Commit?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, we have motion by Dan. Second. Second by Casey. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Five eight, more engineering, not here yet. Actually, there he is. Good timing, Jared. Yeah, you're up to bat.
Sorry, wait. I don't even sit out.
You're fine, you're fine. So, we just got to you on the agenda, if you need a second to gather yourself.
You know, nothing project related to that, just re-track a lot of stuff with the legislature, and they started last week. And Monty sent out that update to you guys for the leading cities, that's some of the stuff to watch too. You guys don't qualify for quite as many programs as a lot of the other towns do. Just for a lot of reasons, I guess. Little bit of city usually get a little more benefit, but there's a few programs out there that you should probably take back of or keep an eye on. For instance, one is the Bank of North Dakota Infrastructure Revolving Loan Program. It's the program you guys use for your street project this year. Last biennial, they appropriated $50 million for small cities. It was used up like that under one of them. So, it was competitive, there were a lot of cities that got turned down for it. And I think it's a good program to keep going for cities like you, and if you want to use it again in the future for infrastructure extensions, housing developments, street work, it's a good program. I think that they're gonna try and redo it again for cities. But that's one of them. And then the other one, the big one, I believe, can you talk about the parade dog bill?
We've talked about it a little bit. I guess we haven't gotten real specific about it yet. I see they attached the number to it now. 1166 or...
I, that could be.
Okay, yeah.
It's a...
If you want to explain a little more about it, that'd be great.
Not much about it, it's still, it's still a draft. They just met, they started last week and then go for a few months, so might change 25 times. But what they're trying to do is try to put a funding mechanism in place for cities and counties that recurs over and over again. And they've got a complicated formula saying how much or when cities would get money, but it would be a recurring biennial thing. And the way it looks right now, if it's unchanged, Hazen would get about $800,000 or $900,000, $800,000 dollars every biennial from the state. And it's coming from oil tax revenue. So, it would be a very, very good thing. What we don't know is if they just give you the money or if they make you submit an application for it. Heard different things. They, they want it tied to infrastructure. I think, at least that's the way it's originally set up. So, it could be something that helps you guys a lot, especially if they make it biennial over and over and over again, that'd be really nice. So, that's a big one, a lot of cities are watching that right now. Curious as to if it's gonna happen, what it's gonna be, what the rules are gonna be. And then the third big thing that could affect you guys is, I know you've, you've been on the list for a State Water Commission for a while. State Water Commission has their own pot of money that goes towards mostly water projects, flood protection, drain projects, water supply projects. It's probably how your water supply through Southwest got built here at, you know, 2010, 2012 time frame. And you guys have been on the priority list for water tower or some version of, some way to fix the water pressure problems up on the northwest side of town. They'll set the budget for water projects for the state and they'll, they'll decide how much money's gonna be in each pot. And at that point, then cities can apply for that money. I guess, I don't know if you guys are all around, but I just read the plan that Alt-AK together back 2012 that kind of details that stuff, so if you weren't around or involved back then, you probably should reread that. Talks about some of the issues, the water pressure issues. There's different options on how to fix that, there's booster stations, there's, there's towers, there's... And if we get into like a, a spot where you're ready to address that stuff, we can talk about options. Because there's not just a one size fits all, there's, you know, there's cheaper options that have consequences and there's larger options anyways. So, that's something you should pay attention to also, because in the last few years, the, there has not been a lot of money in those... Well, actually, four years ago, there was a ton of money available for water supply projects like this. And then two years ago, there was almost nothing. So, a lot of things, a lot of water towers got funded. And now, we did six or seven of them, I guess, across the state four years ago. So, if they put money in that bucket, it might be an opportunity for you to get your water supply problems fixed. And the way it is right now, it's 75% grant, so it's worth pursuing.
When will that eventually come up, we could know more about that?
The last, last time...
At the end of, at the end of session?
Yeah. So, if they put $100 million into that water supply bucket, they're gonna want applications for it. You've already done your pre-planning form that you resubmit each time. And, bah. You know, not much you can do right now, whether to monitor it and know that it's kind of important. Brush up on the study, kind of be ready to decide if you want to pursue it or not, you know, come three, four months from now. Nothing would happen this next year, it's, it's slower moving than that, but if you wanna... Monty went to a meeting at this market here this summer to go through when you submitted the pre-planning forms.
And that's, I've heard is the same for the parade dog money, if it happens, it wouldn't be a tell. Who'd they say?
Yeah.
2020?
2020, we're probably there, it's gonna fill up all the buckets, probably.
Something we monitor, I guess, if you have any questions on it, let me know, ask. Keep looking for it. That's all I got.
Any questions for Jared?
I'm gonna stick around, I have nothing else.
Do you want a frisco?
No, I ain't.
Oh, okay. Just don't chat there, do you? Since you brought up Ted, should we go over that real quick, Monty? Everybody got a copy of the mail construction, the crushing? It took place, I see they did remove the rest of their equipment this weekend out there, the conveyor belts and... I'm not gonna know, they cleaned up pretty good or...
Yeah.
Yeah? So, on the second page, you'll see, or not second page, but last page. So, the estimate was $147,000 that was gonna cost, or they committed $165,511. But there was more material up there than we thought, there was quite a bit more material, actually. I was surprised and shocked, and we do have a very nice pile. On page two, on the top right corner, under unit weights and averages, you can see what the pile consists of. And I know when I was talking to Ted that day, he was out with the drone measuring the pile, and he took a sample of that, he, he thought it was actually better than what we had before. Maybe, maybe the mixture was better, Jared, that, do you see anything there that's...
We use drones to fly stuff too and measure piles and... He looks like he's using a program that's set up for this, he's got other piles measured out there, I'm sure he uses a lot. If it's in the ballpark, I, I haven't done a check, but he could if he wanted us to, but we've not done that.
Okay. I didn't think you would, but that's...
Yeah.
I was out there with Jared, he had the drone, it's pretty cool, I've got a video of what it looks like. It's, it's not like, like the drone you think with the $4, it actually looks like an airplane that's converted. And it's about that wide and it's about that tall. Bright orange, pretty cool. I'm gonna see that video, I'll share with you, but... I don't know if anybody has any questions on this? Is this our, this is our bills now, Monty, or do we take action on this or...
If you want to take action on this, when it was discussed in August, we had it approved, doing the crushing and taking the funding from this, the sales tax fund. So, I guess you would need to approve it as a bill. If we paid an entire thing on the sales tax, it'll leave us a balance of just under $900,000 in the city's sales tax fund.
Again, it's, we will make money off this pile, we've already got people that wanna buy material from it. Are you already loading guys up?
Yeah, I was all the way today.
Yeah.
And the guy called, was looking for dump truck loads and stuff.
No, we do, we do, at this point have it, so it's at $25 a ton, correct? Okay, per ton. I just, I don't wanna be greedy, but can we make more money off this, or should, should we be making more money on this? I think it's one of the things where...
It's probably right on the higher edge of what you're...
Oh, really? Okay.
When we're in the low part, we're not on the low side.
Okay.
It's all depends on the area of the world, yeah.
So, if I don't hear anything different, then I guess we'll continue selling at $25 a ton. And, and that is, again, you know, Dave's doing the loading, or our guys are doing the loading, and we don't have a scale, but we've got a...
Well, we, we went, we went and made, weighed one of our dump trucks empty, and we put a payloader bucket in the truck and went back to the scale and weighed, and payloader bucket holds like one half ton. That's how we came up with $112.50 for a payloader bucket.
Okay. Alright. So, where'd you start the new concrete pile out there?
Uh, just straight salt for that rock pile, it's, it's still out there, kind of in that lowest riverbed area, right at the end of that east end of, of what we've been up to the grass clip and some stuff. Kind of keep it way to the back, I know it's like not near as far back as the semitravel that's out there.
Okay, good. We had a water break on Saturday, by Senex. It was in the kind of their parking, or driveway of their wash bay. So, they'd have to dig up the street, fortunately. Cement in the driveway. So, there's some ass, or concrete that all up there for now. Okay, so, any, any questions or thoughts on, on this?
If you want, when you do the motion to approve the bills, if you staff that, since it is not included.
Okay, alright. We'll leave this at the end for the bills and if there's no other questions. Alright. Six A, local permit. Reliance.
We do an annual calendar and other rapids throughout the year, raise funds for the different programs. Doug actually dropped this off, laid this out there.
Okay, you have a motion? Motion by killer?
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, all we got are reports. Water sewer?
Well, we think it's time.
Okay. On that line break, they did put a new curb stop there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, any reason why, do we know why it happened or there...
I was talking to Paul Church on Sunday, we were kind of wondering, it was PVC.
That's all PVC plate, but that's very...
Maybe...
That's pretty rigid, I mean, any moving of that concrete is probably what snapped that PVC plate.
Paul, I thought maybe the compaction rate wasn't, it wasn't compacted and it started shifting and moving. Who knows?
Same with the pulse that was put in there about 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's what he told me, I wasn't very aware.
But any movement of that concrete with the top of that curb stop, you know, cemented in, I mean, PVC is pretty rigid, you know, pretty rigid, it's been a little flexed to it, so... With the frost in the ground, that concrete would, quarter inch would be enough to break that plate. But curb stops, they're, you know, they're designed to kind of...
To slide, yeah.
But over the years, if that gets rusty down in there, that doesn't still slide up and on with the weather, and the whole thing's gonna...
So, did we put PVC back into the pillar?
I think they did.
So, where did the line, I guess, break at?
So, it was a... It was a...
Just under there. That was 10 inches. About six inches. Alright, streets, cemetery?
I just got one, I'm gonna call it major thing, and Dave will elaborate on it. Our skid loader went out. We had a pump that went out in the gathering, I'll have Dave explain that, but before, I wanna just touch base with Dave, or assuming the ground is frozen off to where obviously we won't get that fence and sort it around that pile. So, I don't know, the sewer are the better, I guess, unless you guys have any other thoughts? The fence that we purchased to go around there.
Right, so we will put it in, so, yeah, so frost lines, two feet.
Yeah, the frost.
Dave, where at Senex it was?
Yeah, no, and that's, I just wanted to kind of touch on that, so... But as for the skid loader, Dave, if you could kind of explain that in a little more detail to the commission?
They had a design change on their seals, they wanted like a single lip seal instead of a double, and they're not standing up, and the seals failed. When they got to the part that had, had the singles, it was an early production, and later they realized it was, it might be a problem, and they upgraded seals that are, still have the original designs, but... They got to the part, I think they're about ready to put it together.
So, there was gonna be warranty?
There's gonna be warranty, one of the warranty motors is actually bad because of the seal failure, so it's gonna get new seals, a new motor, possibly be done tomorrow sometime.
Draw quicker, well, I thought, just go right into it then. Yeah, if there would have been a double seal...
Double seal, that would have been R9.
Yeah, would have been R9, so, we got lucky there. Now, are they, is this supposed to be updated to where...
They should have all the, when we were updating seals, stuff, kind of all this stuff.
It's one of those things that happens. We're, we're, we're abusing it, I talked to the operator, and he's just like, I, I was just pushing snow and all of a sudden it just started rattling.
As soon as we called him on the phone and told him what it was doing, within two minutes, he knew exactly what was wrong. They said, we've done bunches of them already, so it's... That's a problem, they don't let it handle.
Yeah, and I took a drive around Hazen. We did the whole city, went oriented up and moved out, they finished the last, North Star one today. But up to that, it was eight days from the time we started until, so, thinking about previous winters, that's... I just told Dave, whatever you guys are doing differently, continue doing it, 'cause that, to me, is kind of better progress than what we've had to pass, so... But, other than that, I don't know, we had too many complaints, Monty, I don't know if you guys feel more than... I didn't, well, I didn't, nothing really too bad outside of the rivers.
The only thing I noticed a little bit different when we went with the blower down the center piles, looked like we left about four, four or five inches.
Quite a bit more.
I made some adjustments the other day on the, on the stonewall, and it's a issue, it's a change angle. And it went right back down to about the one to two inch.
Yeah, good.
Bleeding and stuff, so yeah, that had to be adjusted for quite a while. When I got back from vacation, I adjusted, and that changed it quite a bit.
Yeah, good.
I noticed that too, but I envisioned when I was helping out a couple winters ago. I mean, we'd get down pressure on that thing and it would just, you could see it, you know, 'cause envision snow getting moved, every time you move it, it gets harder, so...
And it's not like your snow, your home snowboard, it doesn't have a cutting edge on it.
It has got a steel edge, but it's not really a cutting edge.
Right, that's not meant for, yeah, digging deep.
But it's not designed to stay off.
But that, I'm glad you adjusted that, I noticed that too.
That's all that I have.
Okay. Finance, blessing?
Nothing right now.
Police, fire, forestry?
On the, the police, I received the end of the year, kind of a cumulative on all the different calls and stuff throughout the year. It's, it's amazing how much activity our police department is involved in, in our small town, Hazen. So, kudos to them, a lot of different things that they get to experience out there in the streets of Hazen. That's everything I have right now.
Okay. Speaking of forestry, y'all see what we're doing for advertising, for position, for part-time garbage, so, Monty, is that out already?
Yeah, I close this on the 18th.
HCD?
Okay, well, a couple of things to report on. I did a letter of support for, actually a joint letter of support to the county and HCD to James Lehman, who is the gentleman from the Department of Commerce who's in charge of the statewide underground air system. And so, basically, what it was is a letter of support, he had asked if he'd be interested, if I'd be interested in doing one for him. A couple of days, they're meeting with the, the Department of Commerce, will be meeting with some of the subcommittees relative to future funding possibilities. And of course, if you follow any of Governor Murdom's budget address, one of the things he did is he was recommending that 30 million actually go into the budget for underground air systems, and that is outside of the 6 million, and there's actually two of a pool of three and one that are gonna go to Grant Forks anyway. But this would be beyond that, so, I did do a letter of support. We co-signed off on it, the county commission and I, and again, the plan is to look at using RPs and airport as a west test site. I was actually on a conference call this morning with Vision West, and he was on the call, and after he taught, Vision West is also going to write a letter of support for that. Right now, there is not much activity that has taken place, other than some of the independent stuff that you hear. But from a statewide standpoint, there's not much happening in western North Dakota, and there are some reasons for that. One of them, of course, is beyond visual line of sight, which did get passed. We got a variance in the state of North Dakota, especially down in the Grant Forks County, where they can do that. And a couple of things that were, when we met with him a while ago, we wondered about this area, and he feels that Hazen is located really quite well for something in this area. And another thing that has really become, will become a hot topic is the cybersecurity relative to the drone business. He said that right now, the four countries are so far ahead of us that we really need to recog us and what's going on with that. And so, he has a feeling that that could be something that's kind of, it's been in the weeds yet, depending what happens at the national level, but he thinks there's probably gonna be a lot of federal money that goes into cyber, cybersecurity, possibly down the road. Yeah, he does have, so, we're fortunate in North Dakota that we do have a couple of retired high-level generals and whatever in the state that understand that stuff, and he has that with with those folks. In fact, they had a couple-day conference earlier this summer, and I think, no, it was early December, and I was invited to go to it, but had a conflict, so I couldn't go, but, so, we'll see what happens with that. If it gets to the point, and I'm assuming that it will get to the point where they'll ask for testimony on the floor, I'll probably go and testify in favor of, of that bill eventually, so... The other thing is, is, yes, sorry, go ahead.
So, then I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I guess with testing, then, it looks like all of the other areas involved. The only reason why I didn't bring that up is that I just, like, multiple, multiple ways, like residents in town tell me that, I mean, what we even tell here, so, it's, I guess, is an ordinance against like drones.
Well, you know, one of the things that, one of the things that, which I was surprised at is, is that I didn't think that our area would be such a hot area for, but it actually is the reverse of that, and it is, because we have a lot of clean airspace. And another area that they were looking at is, they're actually looking at utilizing the lake, because there's not a lot of air traffic over the lake. And in addition to that, they know that they would eventually need to study that stuff during cold weather. And so, we would be probably pretty primed for that stuff. The other thing about it is this, is that I think from the standpoint of the potential economic impact that it could have, now, a couple of other things, of course, in addition to the cybersecurity business. We have a big farm egg sector here, where those folks could really take advantage of, of that kind of technology. And somebody asked me about the windmills, you know, when I was at the county commission meeting, and again, that'd be the perfect thing to be able to check windmills, so they don't have to, you know, have guys climbing poles, just like the high wire lines, you know, power lines, those kinds of things, so... So, before, I think before, you know, we would come to any conclusion, we would want to really understand what we're talking about in terms of, you know, as of right now, simply with drones, you're not supposed to find what we're people anyway, you know? But that's not to say that that's not happening, because we did have, and I don't think it happened during this thing, but I asked Daryl and his IT guy at the hospital to take a shot of Main Street when we were doing the North Dakota working project, and he did that. And it's interesting, it's interesting, the perspective you get when you, when you take another look at it from that, that way. So, the thing about this is, is that, just like anything else, you know, if the legislation would get passed with that, it'd be just like you heard earlier, same thing with Perry, probably a couple of years out, yeah, before anything would be... Super rush, you know what I mean?
Where's this meaning to be a buster? Are you going to, or...
Well, okay, the one, there, you know, the Department of Commerce now is actually, I guess, something, today's Monday, Wednesday. But that's, he has to, he has to report on a bunch of other stuff that the Department of Commerce has, you know? That's kind of the catch-all place for a lot of these bills, and so, he's got about three or four other ones that he has to report on as well. He said, this UAIS, a stuff that he talks about, he'll probably have about five minutes for it to, to discuss it at that, at this initial set, so...
So... If there's ever an opportunity for him to come this way and visit with us at one of our meetings, that'd be, that'd be awesome too.
Yeah, and, and you know, the thing about it is, is I think that he recognized it, and this gentleman is an ex-military, and I can't remember what branch he was in, but he is a 20-year guy, and... Military, and I can't remember what, what branch he was in, but he is a twenty-year guy, and, uh, is really up to speed on this kind of stuff. So, uh, so we'll just see, we'll kind of follow and see what happens. The next thing, are there other questions, no, yeah, no?
Well, I think, touch base with Casey said, are, are communities starting to put rules in place for drones in, in city limits, and is that something that we would want to look at, or I, I. I know that they can invade your privacy pretty darn easily, but.
I'm not aware of any that, taking little steps yet, but.
No, no. What if, just send a message out on your list, and see if other communities are starting to do that, and it's. You know, I know this past summer, we were at, at the park a couple times, you know, if all of a sudden there's a drone above, you can hear it before you see it. And then it takes off, and it's, it, it, one day, I think you and I were there, Pat, that thing went from the park, probably out to Keely's Grove in about three seconds.
Like a buster.
Well, there was one, we got last year, two years ago, during the high school football game.
Yeah. Well, I know some high schools are using them to video their football games. They, they set up there, and even if the wind is blowing, they'll stay right in that same spot, and they'll video the, the games, we were botting there doing that, it's crazy. Yeah, either. But anyhow, let's look into that a bit.
Okay, uh, it looks promising, we might be getting another tenant for Pioneer, uh, it was, uh, walk through down today with, uh. Couple of folks, initially, they, uh, somebody who lives in town, and is, uh, they're from, originally from modest state, and, uh. Brought their dad in, and it sounds like it might be a goal, so, we'll see how that goes, so we can keep pecking away at that, that's good. The other thing is, I stopped in to visit with the boys at, uh, Manmade Automotive Downtown, uh, they've done a nice job of cleaning up. They're doing some remodeling in there, uh, uh, it's not, the remodeling project isn't slowing down their service business at all. Uh, they're continuing to operate quite well, and so, uh. I was visiting with them, they're, uh, Jeremiah was telling me how difficult it is to be able to, uh, try and get rid of those old cars. He said it isn't just as serious one would think it would be, you know, he has about four of them left on the road out there, and, uh. You know, that came with the sale, and, uh, he is going, he is trying to get rid of them, uh. Only that eventually know that what they would like to do is, is, uh, in that little area where those cars arrived, uh, landscaped. Uh, that out of there, and then they probably eventually paved or whatever, or, or, and whatever, they turned it into a parking lot. So they have some big, big plans, but, uh, it seems like they're, they're doing well, so, and, uh. Uh, we have heard, you know, Suits Bay has, uh, changed hands, and, uh. That, uh, new owner has been in the working and stuff in the scene, and, uh. That's going to, uh, be a probably a little bit larger project before he can, uh, turkey it and get customers over there, but, uh, has a lot of good plans.
She told me today, February one.
Yeah, right.
That's all, that's all the hours, and I kind of like, uh, where you're doing.
You told me he's already got.
Yeah.
Twenty-some kids hired to work there, and he's at theater.
He's actually in, in his, uh, um, has really, I think, really a good plan in terms of what he wants to do with the establishment, and. And, uh, work, you know, I mean, and workers, and of course, that's, I think that's one of the main things, is you can get the workers. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, one thing I would touch on, yeah, is, I know, we talked, we got a couple items that have been up for auction, left for bids. Uh, we got the bus and compressor at the shop, uh, that duly pickup box, and we've received virtually nothing, uh, any interest on those items, and I. Uh, talked to Monty, David, I'd like to get those out. They know parking lot by the city shop, for sale signs on them, or get some, sort of, at least visible, so people see what they're looking at. I was surprised by the size of compressor, and I walked back to the shop all night, yeah, yeah. Well, it's, so, I don't know, we'll see if I have any other ideas, it's almost giving it away, what, what do we have, Monty, for interest, two hundred dollars?
Two dollars, three bucks.
That's, Monty Casey, double that, just for the inches. So, I thought, well, he said, I'll have some money, so. I'll go back and read my paper.
Now you know what.
If red is, right?
Red, red.
Yeah, it can't go two oh one. Uh, ten A, North Dakota Safety Council Legislation, Monty's got some information there, attached, uh, let, assigned letter of support for seatbelt law SB twenty sixty.
Yeah, the Safety Council was supporting, passing the primary seatbelt legislation, making seatbelt violation a primary offense, where, whereby you don't have to be stopped for something else to be written, but seatbelt picking, so. They're asking all the cities for their support, and just thought I'd leave it up to you, or Pat, if there's anything you saw in the letter that. Maybe fishy. Sorry, it's very poor, I guess.
Not, I just wanted to, I just wanted, fast foods, and things that affect our health, and safety, that's a lot. That's not worse, not worse than.
Yeah.
A lot of it has to do with their vision, zero program, zero fatalities, zero, at the state of this.
Well, unless someone has some major heartburn, I will sign, we need a signature from us, Monty, that they're asking for.
Yeah, I'll put it, I'll put your name in online.
Okay. Anybody opposed to it?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I kind of am for me, but not for my children, I want them to wear it.
Be responsible, but bear in mind.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So we would need that emotion, man, if we want to support the North Dakota Safety Council, I think. Hearing no action? We'll table it for the next meeting. Put on next meeting's agenda, please. Thank you. All right, down to eleven, or twelve A. Transit program.
As part of our compliance review, we have Title Six and limited English proficiency policies and these types of things. One thing that came up in the review was the fact that we don't have an agreement with anybody to provide interpretive services. They gave me a couple of people that the state uses, I contacted one of them, there is no cost if we don't use them, if we do have to use them. If you're transit or any other thing with the city, it's fifty-six cents per minute.
So, so, how do, how does that work? Somebody calls for a bus ride that doesn't speak English?
Actually, we've been handling it by text over the last couple of years.
When you say handling it by text, what do you mean?
There was a family that had limited English proficiency, they would text the busing coordinator, and she would arrange the rides.
Okay.
Through, via text.
So they would text this agency that spoke their language?
They would actually use their phone to text directly to the busing office.
But they texted in English, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was texted in English.
But this is, this is clearly for non-English speaking individuals?
Yes.
And you, and you license with this organization, and they have representatives that speak every different language or something?
Yes. There's up to three hundred different languages.
They would call into this?
It would be basically a conference call with this agency, our agency, person that has limited English.
Did you say it's more than muscle, could, could long horse use it also?
It could be used for anybody under our agreement, yeah.
So do we need to take any action, then, Monty, or is this?
Well, I, it needs to be signed and sent back, and it is an agreement stating that we won't pay the fifty-six cents a minute when we use them.
When we use it.
Exactly, when we use them.
Okay.
Have we ever entered into something like this in the past?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
I got one more question.
Yeah, Jason.
Just to back up, are we gonna be out of compliance if we don't?
That was one of the notes in their compliance review that we need to have.
Okay. So, so we're obligated, it's not just being a good neighbor?
Basically.
Okay.
That's a good program, though, if you don't have to pay unless you use it.
Right.
How long is a contract for, is it about yearly?
It's an annual contract, is what I understand. It, it automatically is, unless either party terminates it.
Do we need a motion either?
Yeah.
I will make that motion.
Make a motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye.
Motion carried. Changes to bills. Well, the only one that's not on these sheets is the moisture repression, one hundred and sixty-five thousand five eleven fifty.
I will make a motion to pay the bills, including.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern. Discussion.
This, one of the issues we have is here.
Roll call. Oh, sorry.
That was regarding the guys that were fixing that water refasteners, that's continuing to press that, and it's, uh.
I have a question, Matthew.
Okay, so, I'm gonna go back, we'll do discussion again.
So, Monty?
Yes.
I heard that. Did it take them ten hours to do that, and are they charging the overtime?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, they are. If they're not a firm, they do a bit of firm.
Tim wasn't available.
Oh, I know that, I know.
Kind of, uh, one of the, yeah. Dave and/or, um, the water department was up there the whole time.
Oh, yeah, Tim and Ryan was.
Ryan reviewed this, we invoiced some slats, and said everything looks legit. So, good evening.
No one applies back, though. Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye.
Motion carried, adjourned, thanks for coming.